Okay, excuse me. We'll call this meeting to order. We apologize for the delay, but beyond our control. A regular council meeting of May the 9th, 2022. Is there any additions to the agenda?
Under upcoming events and meetings, Councillor Hildbrandt also sent that out as an email, but I'd like to put on their Foothills Forage Grazing Association and their Gemstone Branches. I think I'd like to put that under upcoming events and meetings.
Okay, so, all right, we'll add that one in. Any other further additions into the agenda?
I can accept the agenda with the additions?
All right, Councillor Reynolds has given us a motion to accept the agenda with one addition added in. And all in favor? Posed, that's carried. Protocol items. On behalf of council, Jared, we would just like to acknowledge that I believe this is your last meeting that you'll be with us and perhaps the last day that you're actually employed by the M.D. You're gonna, after today's meeting, you're gonna make the move to Edmonton to become a policy analyst with the Alberta Emergency Management Association, which is part of municipal affairs. So on behalf of council, we just say thank you for your time here and your contribution to the M.D. of Tabor.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And good luck, best wishes to you in all you do in the future.
Thank you.
Any other protocol announcements or recognitions? We'll move down to confirmation of our minutes of April 26, 2022. Any corrections or amendments on the minutes? Somebody want to give a motion to accept them?
I'll give you the motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Councillor De Gruev gives us a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting of council, April 26, as presented. All in favor? Carried. And public engagement, there's no chance anybody's online, is that correct, Arlos?
Correct.
So there's no online people, no delegations? Anybody have any conflict with anything that's remaining in the agenda today? Seeing none, we'll move on. Consent agenda correspondence first is a letter from County of 40 Mile indicating their support in, excuse me, regarding a rest stop somewhere along Highway 3 corridor. The second one is a letter support from the town of Tabor, also supporting the idea of a rest stop somewhere along Highway 3. There we are. And the last letter is from Minister MacIver acknowledging our meeting at RMA and the topics we discussed. And he's saying he's looking forward to further conversations with us regarding the assessment model review that's coming up. Any questions or anything that, or anything from the correspondence? And we would, short consent agenda, we'd need a motion to accept the consent agenda as it's been presented.
I can move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, Councillor Meenagge gives a motion to accept the consent agenda as it's been presented. All in favor? Excuse me. We'll move into memos. Upcoming meetings and events memo. Just find it here. So, first item on there is McCappy Day's volunteer request to our shifts. And if they're interested in participating in that, I think they got a hold of Amy, don't they, at Taboran District Health Foundation? Next one is Vauxhall District, Vauxhall Centennial Pancake Breakfast on July the 1st, setup, serving, and cleanup, as well as a parade on July the 1st at 11:00 a.m. Is, at this point, I know we're still a month, a little more, almost two months away, I guess as long as we keep it on here. Is there a deadline that they need to know if there's any volunteers?
Double parade.
Okay, well, we can just keep bringing it back.
Refairs. I'll be signing up for the pancake breakfast and going to the parade, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah, me as well.
Okay, sounds good. And then you've got like a little thing for your name for the parade, right? We probably need to get one for Councillor Hild and a Councillor De Gruev.
Probably for all three newly elected councillors.
Probably for all the new ones, yeah. And I think, what's that? Just they'll stick on a door, so they know who you are. Do I have yours in my car?
I think so. I won't be there, but I'll go to the Tabor one, just as a representative, if you're, depending on what your schedule is.
Well, I told Chantel that I'd come and do pancakes that morning. So if there's something here in town that morning, you probably need to fill in for me.
Okay, yeah, I'll be available. I just wouldn't be able to commit to a whole day just because I have a wedding the next day. May 11th, I am gonna be selling there from 9 till 11 at Matt McCappy Day. So I'll be looking forward to seeing your smiling face come through the drive-through. That supports health in our community. And I did send everyone May 19, that's the victim services evening. And so that's an open invitation to the community. You don't have to reply, but Tabor Library at 7:00 p.m. Councillor Tricado is going to be speaking as a victim. He was invited through a different channel, just to share some of his experiences. So that's also available, but it's not specific to council, but I think council did all receive an invitation.
Okay. So the Vauxhall Parade Invitation, we also got a parade invitation from the town of Bo Island, and that is on July 16th. Is anybody interested in participating in that Does the Chamber Parade float, go to these sort of things?
It was brought up at the last Chamber meeting, and they're unsure whether they could pull the float that far without it disintegrating. And because of its width, they can't put it into an enclosed trailer. So should they decide to redesign and make a new float, they're gonna make one that will fit in an enclosed trailer, so they don't have the same issues. So I don't think the Chamber is participating, unless somebody wants to wear the corn costume and walk the parade route.
The only reason I was wondering if we should attend is just because of our relationship with Water Commission. So I could tentatively be available, but it might be nice for someone who's on the Water Commission to be there as well. Just shows good relations, since we already have a strong relationship with them.
That's another one we could.
I have a reunion that weekend. Otherwise, I knew there was something up, so I looked at my calendar, so I can't participate.
Well, I'll make my best effort to be available for the 16th of July. That's the date, is it 16th?
July 16th. Okay. The next one I've got here is joint meeting with Taboran District Chamber Commerce and the town of Tabor. Is that, that date set for June the 6th? Is that what that's showing me, Arlos?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. And do we have any agenda items we'd like to propose? We usually do this once a year.
I had talked to a town councillor, and it sounded like the town wasn't in favor of this date because of the Seniors Week.
Oh, Seniors Week going on.
I thought that they were going to maybe ask to have it changed. So I don't know where they're at with that. It was just one of the councillors that had brought that
We can, we can wait and see, and have it tentatively in our schedules.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a conflict that night as well, so.
Okay, going down, we have Alberta Japan Twin Municipalities Association Conference at the Tabor Heritage Gym. As a municipality, we don't have a twin municipality, but the town does with one or two cities over there, just one? Is this something anybody would be interested in attending, participating in?
I'm away those days.
You said you're away? Okay. I mean, I could, I could certainly take in Friday and perhaps the Saturday. That's June the 3rd. Let me just check my calendar here. I don't have anything down there.
Yeah, I am in Regina. I think Councillor De Gruev is as well for the FCM conference on that date.
Anybody else interested at all? The next one I have is Seniors Week on June the 6th, breakfast and opening kickoff. Anybody? You could mark me down for that one, Lace.
Yeah, we just have a, I have a conflict because it's SDA.
Right.
Yeah, and ASB, right? It would be good to attend, but.
Yeah. Not being on ASB, I can be there for a little bit.
Or SDA, yeah. Yeah, whatever works, we'll try and make some of these events, but sixth is tough.
And the last one I've got, ASB Town Hall Reminder with John Conrad, just an open discussion with him on any topics that are of interest to our ag service board or council. And that is on June the 8th, from 11:00 a.m. to noon. And there'll probably be some, an invite sent out close to the date, so anyone can participate in that. Probably an agenda item for ASB to see if there's anything that is, that we want to discuss with him, Murray, or... Any other, John?
Just had a question on the ASB. Is that, is it a provincial? Is that just for us?
I think it's provincial.
It's a provincial town hall?
I think so. The last time I participated in one, it was.
I wonder if something around soil erosion and strategies might be, might be a really good topic to bring up.
It's an, it's a provincial, it's not just for our ASB, it's provincial.
That's what I had.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I understood, too. Okay, any other meetings and events that anybody's aware of? John, or?
Well, that.
Foothills Forage Grazing. I know we got an invitation, or you got a.
I had it come on one of my feeds, too, and Councillor Hildbrandt, and I thought that'd be a good one. I plan on attending that one, June 22nd.
June 22nd?
Yeah. Up in Gem.
That kind of leads into some of the soil erosion issues that we've been having this spring, past spring. And it's also being promoted by a number of our neighboring municipalities, County of Newell, County of Vulcan, some of our bordering municipalities here. So I thought it was of interest, and it's not that far away.
And the only other thing I had was just stating the obvious, just because when I looked at my June calendar, it's quite a difference. The meeting's on the 7th and the 21st, so not our normal weeks. And so for me, I was just like, okay.
So that's one thing, like we have a meeting, whoops, excuse me, on the 24th of May, and then the next one is the 7th of June, and the 21st of June, and then we don't have anything scheduled till the 19th of July. And so I think I talked to Arlos a little bit about that the other day. And is there, is that the schedule you want to keep, or do you want to change things? And so we've got some note, can give out some notice. I thought that between the 21st of June and the 19th of July was a long, long distance, but it's kind of up to council to decide here.
Is it, would it be okay to move the last meeting in June to the 28th? Would that, I guess, be a better, better timeframe between meetings?
Something council can consider. I honestly don't know why it's the 7th and 21st, whether it was an oversight or not, I'm, I'm not sure. But if you wanted to just set it to be with what we're used to, being the 2nd and 4th Tuesdays, you can do that as well.
14th and the 28th?
And we do have a June 30th deadline with regard to implementation of the Ombudsman's recommendation. So it might be prudent to have a meeting shortly prior to that deadline.
Which would be the 28th, right?
Yeah.
So would everybody want to go with a normal schedule, which is the 2nd and 4th Tuesday of that month? And if we need to, if we're not making enough progress on it, we can always have a special council meeting to get the ombudsman thing done. But it's up to council. John?
Do we need a motion to move that to the 14th?
I think we need a motion, don't we?
Yeah, that would be helpful. I guess I'll give you a motion to move the June meetings to the 14th and 28th.
Okay, any further discussion?
Only question I have is, and I realize it's a council decision, were those dates at all accommodated because of staff availability or scheduling for holidays, or are we okay?
Do you remember why we did it?
I honestly don't recall. Like I just said, I don't know why it's that way. I know, being that the first me, being that the first meeting of the month is scheduled for the 7th, it could have just been an end-of-the-month miscalculation when we were doing our schedule. Could have been. I honestly don't know.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that, because that happens, and we all got to see it. And so it's our, it's our responsibility. I just want to make sure that we're not changing some administrative problem as well, creating an issue. So from an administrative point of view, there's no issue with changing the dates?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Councillor De Gruev has given us a motion to move the June meetings from the 7th and the 21st to the 14th and the 28th. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion? Posed, that's carried. So the dates will now be changed. And like I said, we'll keep the ombudsman report in mind. And if we have to have an extra meeting somewhere along the line to get that done, we will. Anything else on upcoming meetings and events? If not, we'll move down to 8.2, which is an offer to purchase update.
I'll make a motion to accept the upcoming events and meetings memo.
Okay, we're okay? Okay. So Councillor Meenagge has given us a motion to accept the upcoming meetings and events memo. All in favor? Carried. 8.2, Offer to Purchase Update. Arlos?
So this, this memo is ultimately kind of looping back, making sure council is aware that we are following up on the resolution that was made. At a previous council meeting with R to the sale, our proposed sale of a couple of lots in Enchant, the proposed or potential purchaser elected not to proceed with, with only purchasing one lot. The preference was to purchase two lots side by side, which we didn't actually have, we actually didn't have that availability. So his, his preference is to look forward to the new lots that will be developed here in the near future.
So on that one, you need a motion just to accept for information. She's smiling, so must be.
Yeah, we really just wanted to satisfy the resolution that council.
Right, okay.
I'll make a motion to accept that for information.
Okay, Councillor Reynolds gives a motion to accept the Offer to Purchase Update for memo for information. All in favor? That's carried. Number nine, Request for Decision Non-Bailot 2022 Operational Grants for Recreation. Arlos?
So this will be new to some councillors. This is in following with our funding for operational, operational grants to towns, village, and recreation boards. Based on the submission of the inventories that each group submits annually, this is the proposed funding, funding amounts that will be going to these groups, being the two towns, village, and the Hamlet Recreation Boards. Just again noting that there are some obligations with regard to the intermunicipal collaboration frameworks, with regard to funding levels in recreation. So we do need to honor those until, until those, those agreements are starting to be reviewed again, which should be later this year, I believe.
So did any of these increase this year, Arlos? And if yes, why? Like, I think like, oh, there we are, okay. John?
I just have a question on the, how often the ICFs are reviewed?
Typically, I believe every five years. This is, it's only, it's, they only came into play in 2018-ish, around there. So this would be the first go-around.
And then there's also a, the operational grants from December 8th, 2020? How is that revised?
The operational grants from 2020?
Yeah.
I can't speak.
From the Policy Handbook. The Policy Handbook.
Per policy here?
Yeah, that's, no, it's on, there's an attachment here for the Policy Handbook, yes. I just wondered how that's arrived at and when that is revised or, or looked at again.
When the policy is revised?
Yes, well, it says December 8th, 2020 here. I'm just wondering what schedule it is for, for revision and, and what the process is there.
Yeah, so the, that's the date that it would have been passed, or either passed or amended. 2021 was actually the first date, was actually the first year the policy was in effect. So before then, we didn't have such a policy.
Yeah, as a result of our recreation, what do they call that?
Plan, master plan?
Yeah, Recreation Master Plan that we did. We're trying to figure out a way, like to justify the money that we were giving out. And so we went to, like under number four here, if, if the community had these sort of items in it, you'd get so many points, et cetera, et cetera. So you can see in the town of Tabor, for example, I think they're at 156,000 prior. And as a result of going through the Recreation Master Plan and itemizing the, the things that they had in their community, we actually up theirs from 156 to 199. And a community such as Barnwell, they actually went down. But as a result of the ICF agreement that we had with them, we are honoring that and keeping them at the same level for, for And that was, there's actually dropped from 27, I think roughly, to 13. But as a result of the ICF, we're, we're keeping them, we're adding another 13, what they, over and above what they would get as a result of the recreation study and the policy here.
The, the idea was to make it a formula base rather than ad hoc?
Yeah, ad hoc, yeah. We could, nobody could just, nobody had any particular idea why we were giving the amount of money we were. And so through the Recreation Master Plan thing that we did, and itemizing what each community actually had, it was, it's an easier way of justifying the money that we give to all the different communities.
It also provides some consistencies, though, that each year we weren't just wondering about which money to give. It was, you know, very planned, strategic, and, you know, work with them. And if there was to be a change, we can adjust without it just being arbitrary. So the RecMaster Plan and our staff were tasked with a big job to come up with this. And so far, it seems satisfactory. And then Arlos spoke to the ICFs, and that we had an obligation until we get to the point where we open them up for review, and then we would most likely argue to put the language that our RecMaster Plan formula would come into play, rather than this determined amount.
Does that help understand, help give some background as to where we're at here? Because before, it was very confusing as, as to, you know, why we're giving the amount of money that we were. And during the Recreation Master Plan helped us get that all sorted out.
Yeah, no, that's, that sounds good. As long as, like, we're reviewing it regularly, then as needs change, we're adjusting. But it makes a lot more sense now to me. Thank
So, Arlos, if a lot of those ICFs were done in 2018, is next year when some of those are gonna have to be looked at again, then begin to start looking at them again?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, any other questions on operational grants for recreation? Everybody okay with those dollar numbers?
And these are the, these are the numbers that we have in our budget?
Correct. Yeah, we take, we take the envelope of funds that's set aside, that are set aside in the budget, and then they're allocated.
So this, yeah, this, these amounts are in the budget already?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, somebody prepared to make a motion, in one way or the other?
I'm not volunteering to make a motion, just for the record. Just one, one thought that came to mind this morning, actually, as I was thinking on this item. We did actually get some feedback from Grassy Lake Rec Board, who also runs the community hall in Grassy Lake. One of the concerns that they brought to light was the fact that they only receive one garbage can. I know this might be, sound like a bit of a minimal request, but it would require. it would require some sort of consideration from council. But the, they, they have access to one, one garbage bin for, for garbage at the community hall. And they've, through our, through our staff, they've indicated that that doesn't seem to be all that sufficient at times. And they asked about the possibility of getting another one, at no cost to the municipality, I believe. Our utility bylaw does not really allow for, for exemptions. And to be honest, once you kind of start going on the path of exemptions, where do you stop and where do you start from a, from a question of, of consistency and fairness? But one thought that I, I mean, council could consider is they could, they can, as per our bylaw, they can access an additional bin just for the cost, the same cost of what their initial bin costs, so another eleven dollars a month. So if council wanted to consider their request, perhaps it could come more formally than just verbally. But I just wanted to bring it to council's attention, that maybe you up the, adjust the funding if council deemed it wise to, to do such, eleven dollars a month wise. That way, you don't, you're not, you wouldn't be, if it's something that council considered worthy, you wouldn't be in a situation of considering an exemption. You'd just be facilitating the request through, through additional funding.
And this is primarily for events at the hall, then, when they, when they're running over the bin spaces?
Yeah, my understanding is that at times it can, one bin doesn't, doesn't meet their needs. So, I mean, there is, there is a, like, they do have the possibility to access more bins, it's just that additional cost as per any other, as per any other resident or customer.
Okay.
I just think that that's a, a great trade-off for the excellent work that's being done out there. And if there's a demand, that means the use is up, which means they have the dollars to maintain and continue to program. So if you feel that that, um, Arlos, does the eleven dollars times twelve meet the request? Or do you need to see it formally before we make the adjustment?
Well, it was just, it was, it was brought to, brought to my attention, I don't know if two is the, is the magic number or if they're looking for an additional two. So that's something that I would want to confirm before I finalize, or before I have council consider that more formally, I just wanted to more so bring it to your attention that, that that feedback was given to us.
So may the adjustment be made after the fact, if we approve this base amount on this current recommendation?
Yeah, it would, it would just come in the form of a separate RFD and.
Yeah, I'll go ahead, John.
Are those the bigger size bins or are those just residential sized bins?
Residential sized bins, yeah.
So they can access like the bins we have to the west of our building here from the town of Tabor, the bigger sized ones?
Like the commercial sized?
Yeah, they're not capable of doing that in Grassy?
No, not with our, not with our pickup system.
So you want us to pass this the way it is today? And then if they want some more bins, we just make an adjustment to the rec board's ask here, or?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind actually getting a formal, formal request. That way, we know exactly what they're, how many they feel they need. Because I wouldn't want to counsel, it was just brought to my attention and I wouldn't want council to not approve or not consider the, the full request, if it's different than what I understand. So just, it would require a little more confirmation on my end. But I wanted to make council aware of that, the feedback that we have received.
Anybody prepared to make the motion, one way or the other, John?
I'll move that the twenty twenty-two operational grants for recreation boards, towns and villages be distributed in the following amounts as per policy. Enchant Rec Board, forty-eight thousand, eleven dollars. Hayes Rec Board, forty-eight thousand, eleven dollars. Grassy Lake Rec Board, fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four. Town of Tabor, two hundred and one thousand, four hundred and ninety-three. Town of Oxl, hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and sixty-four. Village Barnwell, thirteen thousand, seven hundred and nineteen. And that additional twenty twenty-two rec grant fund, grant amounts be dispersed in the following amounts as per intermunicipal collaboration framework agreements. Town of Oxl, nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-six. Village Barnwell, thirteen thousand, four hundred and forty.
Okay. Councilor Grunt's given us the, the motion, is there any further discussion or comments or questions on the motion? Hearing none, we'll call a question, all in favor, opposed, that's carried, thank you. We have a couple of offered purchases, Peter and Margaret Bueckert. And these are for lots in Enchant, I believe. Arlos.
I really have nothing to add unless there's questions that council has.
So you've seen the, the offer to purchase a lot and you've also seen the lot location there in Enchant? And any comments or questions or discussion?
There's one comment, not exactly related to this, but the chart of the lot inventory is very, very notable, especially the zeros that are on, on that table.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion on that offer to purchase? Somebody prepared to make a motion?
Actually, I can move that the offer to purchase for lot four, block thirteen, plan zero eight one four two five five be accepted and that the lot be sold to Peter, Peter and Margaret Bueckert for twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-one cents plus GST for a total of twenty-six thousand, one twenty-one oh seven, subject to approval of development permit application. Entering into lot sales agreement, entering into a utility account, closure within sixty days of payment of the purchase price.
Okay, councillor Reynolds has given us the motion to accept the offer for purchase for twenty-four thousand, eight seventy-seven, twenty-one plus GST. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor of that motion, carried. Next is offer to purchase from David and Dana Caillou. Again, a lot in Enchant area. And again, you have a, the map there showing exactly which lot that they're after. And with those ones being sold, just three left lots, lots left up there in lace?
Four.
Four, okay. All right, any further comments, questions, discussion on that? John.
I've got a question on the, do we have any idea what the new lot costs are going to be in Enchant? Or is that, are even ballpark on it?
Um, I think we do have a ballpark, I don't, I don't want to say them, just because I don't have it in front of me right now. And I wouldn't want to make the wrong guess, but I think they had come. The council was a while ago, do you recall? They are, they are, they are substantially more, I mean, these were developed in early two thousands, so yeah, costs have changed for a fair amount since then.
Murray?
See on his, uh, offer to purchase, if you flip a few more pages?
Down here?
Yeah, right there, it says we would like to develop, uh, the development permit to be valid for twenty-four months due to COVID delays. Like, do we do this, or you can buy a lot and don't have to bill on it right away?
I, I think the development permit conditions would be subject to the development process, not really the sales agreement. He just put that note on there, go ahead, Lisa.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, that would be a yes. If he chooses to fill out, when he fills out his development permit, that would be a decision that the SDA considers. And right now, the policy reads here a year, so.
So after Murray's comment here, we, would we recognize that? Because that's on his offer to purchase, so if we accept the offer to purchase, are we accepting that condition?
If, if you want to be extra vigilant, then you could exclude, you could exclude the note that was put on there. Just for security sake.
Yeah, otherwise, otherwise people might just gobble up them last four lots and sit on them, and then.
Um, you could even, you could even confirm in, in a resolution that's, that's made, that you, that you will follow existing policy as it relates to development permit timelines? Which is twelve months, correct? Yeah.
So it won't change his offer to purchase. I, it's not that we would put him at risk of someone else buying it, but I think we should be really clear because, you know, the SDA has to have a discussion on that. And I'd hate for him to think he was buying it with that little memo, even with Arlos's comment to exclude the note. I'd rather say the sale is contingent on the current conditions, you know, that. I just can't quite recall what our SDA stuff says, so I don't, maybe we're creating a problem that doesn't exist, but.
I was gonna say, I, I would exclude the note. And if after, if he gets his development permit, if COVID delays, contractor issues, and/or supply disruptions cause a delay, he can always ask for an extension. I wouldn't, I don't see that this needs to be part of the sale agreement, he needs to be. No, I think he needs to know that the normal development timeframe is a year. And if he needs an extension at some point in time, he can come to SDA and plead his case and get one. That makes sense.
I would, I would view that, that note as a, as a term of the sale. And I think maybe we should reject that term.
I would think in the motion, you just say that, and I don't, I said I'm not a good at crafting motions, but that you said the development permit is not part of the sale, in my eyes.
Is our policy for twelve months, like in our policy?
SDA policy.
So we can, we're crafted to follow our policy or whatever?
Yeah, because council doesn't have the authority to override SDA on that, that's correct, right?
Yeah, if it's part of the development approval, that's, that's in SDA's ball court.
Yeah.
There's no, there's no issue from a clarity perspective in outright excluding the notation that's, that's here.
Right.
Just for, just to be extra vigilant, right?
Okay, so somebody want to make the motion with that noted exclusion on there?
I can move that the offer to purchase for lot eight, block fourteen, plan zero eight one four two five five be accepted and the lot be sold to David and Dana Caillou for twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars, twenty-one cents plus GST for a total of twenty-six thousand dollars, one hundred, twenty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars, seven cents, subject to approval of delivery permit application, entering into a lot sales agreement, entering into a utility account, closure within sixty days and payment of the purchase price. Furthermore, council rejects the term that the development permit be valid for twenty-four months since it is not under council's jurisdiction and it falls under subdivision development authority.
All right. Councillor Hildebrand's given us a motion to accept the offer for purchase for twenty-four thousand, eight seventy-seven, twenty-one plus GST. You were helping me with the last little phrase here. Okay.
And that council rejects the extension request since it is not under council's jurisdiction and falls under the subdivision and development authority.
Okay, that's the way you wanted it worded.
It's on the floor now, so if there's a problem, I think it's okay, but anyone else is more than willing to adjust or amend that motion.
Okay. I think that's the proper procedure, because like I said, council doesn't grant extensions to permits. It's, we'd have to go to SDA, and if SDA's chose to grant him an extension, that would be up to SDA. Okay, everybody understand what we're voting on here? All those in favor of the motion, opposed, that's carried. Oxl Fire Authority Agreement Review. Arlos.
Yeah, so you'll see the, council will see the attached correspondence from Town of Oxl, requesting that we initiate review of a couple of, a couple of fire authority related agreements. One is the actual agreement establishing the authority. And then the other agreement is their facility lease agreement. Um, I believe some of the context around the first agreement, the regional fire authority agreement, is just bringing it more, more up to date. And because it comes up for renewal in twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three, so they're wanting to start that process, is my understanding. And then the facility lease agreement, they had some questions and concerns around some of the responsibilities with regard to landlord and tenant, with regard to maintenance and repair items. So they're wanting to clarify some of those things through this process.
So would that go to the regional fire authority for discussion, or does it come here, or just exactly, how do we tackle this?
Well, I think the regional fire authority has, has discussed this initially, or has had some, some very preliminary discussion on it. I, I would say as far as actual negotiating, administrations could get together, kind of understand the base, in an effort to understand the base concerns, base issues, we can bring them back to council. And I think it would be a perfect fit for the respective intermunicipal development committee to, to have any further negotiation if needed.
And then with AHS, with the ambulances being in there, that's, that's administered through the fire authority or through the town of Oxl?
That's an agreement between the town of Oxl and AHS, so.
Okay. Other questions? Other questions?
So how often are these agreements looked at as well? Just curious.
I, I don't, I mean, the, the regional fire authority agreement um identifies the term ending in. In July of two thousand twenty three, so it's gonna have to be looked at. I think it was a ten year agreement on that. So it'll have to be looked at before then, which is, I believe, the primary reason that's here. And I'm not sure what the term is on the facility lease agreement. I didn't check that before I looked. But it'll be whatever the, based on whatever the identified term is.
So and we have similar agreement with the uh village of Barnwell as well, is that right?
We have an agreement with the village of Barnwell, yeah. As a relate, I think that's referred to as the Barnwell Fire Partnership, something along those lines, slightly different verbiage.
So to begin with, uh the two couns, two administrations would get together and see what the issues are and then you'd bring it back to council?
Yeah, yeah, and then we would go from there. That's, that's kind of how I would expect it to move forward. Um I did mention in here, once we receive some presentation or. Discussion on the regional fire master plan that might provide a little more, because that was part of their process is renewing some of the agreements, so there might be some feedback. Maybe some valuable feedback in there, but. Or just feedback, whether it's valuable or not, I can't, can't speak to, but.
I could move that council direct administration to provide response. Response correspondence to the town of Oxl indicating the willingness to engage and review negotiations. Of the Oxl Regional Fire Authority Agreement and Fire Hall Faculty Lease Agreement.
Okay, got a motion on the floor from Counselor Reynolds. Any further discussion, comments or questions? Saying none, then we'll call the question that Counselor Reynolds has given us a motion, the council direct administration provide response correspondence to the town of Oxl. Indicating a willingness to engage and review and negotiation of Oxl Regional Fire Authority Agreement and the Fire Hall Lease. Fire Hall Facility Lease Agreement. All those in favor? Next item is nine point five council strategic priorities.
So the, the, this is a summary or documentation of the. All lines of summary of the events of our strategic planning session held in earlier, earlier in April. One of the big reasons I want it to be in front of council is just to make sure that it, in, in their mind, it reflects what we indeed discussed. And identified as strategic priorities, both now. Both now in and in the short term, long term, longer term futures. Being within this, the next five years approximately. And there was also some recommendations in there for, for administration to implement if councils in agreement as well. Mostly as it relates to information flow as well as monitoring and reporting with regard to the strategic priorities. And I'm open to, to questions as, as usual. The key, the key, the key point of focus for, for the organization, um once council gets to the point of adoption. Is um. The one page strategic priorities chart, um that's a tool that will, the dat, referred to as a dashboard chart. But that's something that we'll use on a regular basis. Both administratively and with council, just to make sure that we keep it top of mind and actual. Keep our actual priorities a priority.
Okay, so you've got this uh review in front of you from our uh strategic planning session back in April. Anything you want to discuss or need any further clarification on?
I just have a, I have a little comment here. It's, I was just looking through the issues and opportunities list. And um I'm wondering how much of a, a long range plan it was, or it was just the items that were topical that week. Cause I just look at some of the things that we've been dealing with, you know, whether it's, uh you know, road condition, washboard. Didn't even rank on this list and, and that's the things that we've been dealing with since, and so I'm just. Trying to sort through, is it really a strategic plan or was it just what we saw at that moment?
Well, can I? Respond through, through the reef? So there's no question that whatever we discussed was what was captured at that, at that event. At the end of the day, and pretty much everything with regard to certain, with the exception of certain legislation and certain bylaws. Council's direction and will trumps, trumps anything, right? The own, the, the tool here is to try to reflect essentially that. If council sees other pressing needs that need to be dealt with before these, well, then we kick those off the now list. And put whatever it is that council um deems necessary to be in the now list as, as priority. So that's, that's also one of the reasons I, I believe behind the recommendation to be looking at it quarterly. So as things come up, then council unpacks those important strategic priorities which, which change. But um from a long term perspective, um to try to answer your question directly, Counselor Hildebrand. It's not a long term strategic plan. It's short term in terms of this term, so. Four year strategic priorities, action items to try to achieve some of these strategic priorities. Does that? Provide some?
Yeah, it does help. I just, just, you know, thinking about what we've been dealing with in the, was it month or month and a half since that? That session and, and reading it is kind of, is enlightening for me anyways.
The only thing I might add is um. If, if we find, if we do find our strategic priorities changing monthly, then we will get a lot, a lot. A little bit done on a lot of things.
Well, just for example, like the, the code of conduct update draft, um that got pushed up. Outside of, well, in a way outside of our control, but that got pushed up to the top and it's uh. It's of pretty serious importance right now because of our deadlines.
Yeah, and it'll likely be one of the first things that gets completed and replaced by another priority.
So those priorities for now, the, under the now category, good for everybody on council or you want, you see something changing? Or you're good with that or the next ones? Or the later ones?
I guess when I reviewed it, my only concern is that when we talk about, well, our most important things is our road network. And it doesn't really hit the list. I mean, we could fit that into all of the things except for four and five, I guess. You know, well, three, four and five. But doesn't need to be specific so that as we look at our future plans, even our term plans. It's priority and I, I don't want us to lose sight, even when we concluded that strategic planning session and. The uh presenter leader said, this is a economic driven um council. I don't disagree with that, but we know that if our road network fails, our. People who live here, their economics fail, so it isn't just that we're looking for the next great tax base. Where we want to make sure that our, our current people are looked after, the ones who are currently paying the taxes, so. I don't know if we need to evaluate that or is that just, we know that no matter what, roads are a priority. These are sort of these extras, these nice things that we do and no matter what, our focus, our main amount of money. That is spent of resident tax dollars is roads, so is that a given? I, I'm just asking that.
And I, I feel that also, but the last few years, roads have been in very good condition. So it's not on our top of mind until the washboards got developed and then, then all of a sudden roads become top of mind. But I think we run an excellent uh road system, so we're, we're, it's, it's just not. At the forefront of our thought, but it should always be priority.
Another one that I noticed too is the residential development strategy is in later. But when, you know, this earlier meeting, I just noted that we have zero lots available in a number of categories in a number of hamlets. And that's not something that we can wait till later, so I'm not.
Well, under now, we've got Grassy Lake Residential Development Alternatives in the now category, but I know that.
Yeah, but we have more, more than just residential. We have commercial lots, we have um. Enchant lots are, we're down to what, four now residential and, or three, so it's. When you're at those numbers, it's, it should be a priority.
Well, I think with the enchant one, I said, I don't know that there's commercial lots included in that, that we've certainly got the residential side. Hopefully being developed this um, this summer and uh. You're outlining something down there for us.
Just some, if I could add a couple of thoughts, like these are the strategic, this, this includes strategic priorities of council. As well as some operational strategies that were identified that could be pursued. And a lot of what I'm hearing is, is touched on in this. And the action items here um are intended to be relatively short term action item, once they're achieved. Then we set the next, whatever the next short term action items are, even if it's on the same topic, so that we see progress. In achieving some of these strategic priorities. In addition to that, the strategic priorities are on top of day to day. So if we look at our budget, the lion's share of our budget is transportation. Our day to day operations does address transportation as a pri, as a priority. In terms of delivering that service. So the, everything we see here is, is over and above day to, day to day. And that's, I think that was like one of the key. Key factors that we, that was, that was attempted to be emphasized as part of the strategic priorities process is that. We carry out a regular suite of local service, local services, service delivery. Plus, we also try to pursue these strategic priorities of council. So we will always be, on an operational level, we'll always be addressing things like transportation and all the various different. Aspects of our budget that we address annually.
I think another big one, and it might fall under the land management plan, is I remember after our strategic plan going home that afternoon. And it was a day from hell with the land bowling and, and I think soil erosion needs to get up to. The now category of. Of trying to figure out how to uh. Proceed that it works for everybody to do a little bit better job of keeping our soil on our own land base.
And I think the exercise was very good. Um it was an opportunity for council and staff to really evaluate where we're at, get to know each other a little bit. I worry when we, you know, have a list, I'm looking at the issues and opportunities list, so almost eighty items. And we prioritize by order of importance, there are seven counselors and not sure how many staff. So the point system to me is a little bit arbitrary, because my, my priority to. Anyone else's might be very different and especially when there's almost eighty um choices. So I don't think we're far off on this, but I do worry that if this is the only guiding. You know, and as Arliss said, council will decide, it's just a, I don't want to. Put everything we have into this, right, and lose sight of the other things that become a priority. Like agriculture, soil erosion, transportation, you know. When he stated we were an economically driven council, I don't think that's wrong, because everything we deal with is money based. But it isn't just the attracting the next land westing. It's making sure that we have a good, strong agricultural core. In the end of table.
Is there anything like Arlo's talked about from an operational level, transportation is the highest priority? But is there anything for the later, the next category that you'd like to move up or? Or we still think we're on the right track with what we've got in the now category?
Reece Harris?
Yes.
If I might offer like, this is, is, this is, maybe I missed the mark in terms of how this is being presented. But it's being presented as a tool, so it's a tool that we would, we would review quarterly and council would have the opportunity to. Kick things out of the now priority and adding, add something back into. That, that is a priority at, at the moment. It's meant to be a living process and a managing process. With respect to the, the point system, I think that it is relatively arbitrary with a couple of exceptions. One, it just, it's there to express and show that the depth of discussion. And topics that were reviewed as part of the strategic planning process, but also. The other exception is that which was prioritized. Considers that which is most heavily weighted by council, not staff. And that, and that, that's, that's identified by the, the bold capitals. That you see in the, in the one page strategic priorities chart. So it's meant to be, to be brought to council um quarterly for review and discussion. If there's new priorities that we need to unpack further and kick out an old one. That's no longer a priority or less of a priority, then we do that and then we would update the, update this accordingly. But I still maintain if we are changing priorities on a monthly or a couple of month basis, then we'll get a little bit done on a lot of things.
So again, I mean, uh we're, I'm just asking if we're good with the ones that are on there now and. Everybody's okay with that?
I'm glad to hear and I think we were informed that we would deal with this every quarter, because then we'll really see. If this is a workable document for us, so I think to have a starting place is important, so. On that, uh because I can't still access my iPad, if I could just see what the motion looks like and see if it.
Can you backtrack there?
Oh. So I'm uh. I will be, make the motion that council adopt the strategic priorities and implementation recommendations as presented. And outline in the attached. and outline in the attached document, strategy priority setting. And that council will review the strategic priorities on a quarterly basis.
Okay. Councilor Minag has given us a motion that council adopt the strategic priorities and implementation recommendations as presented and outlined in the attached document, strategic priority session, setting session. And that council will review on a quarterly basis. Is there anything further to that?
Review the strategic priorities on a quarterly.
Okay, review the strategic priorities on a quarterly basis. Okay, thank you. Any further discussion or comments or questions about that? Are we okay with what we've got in front of us? We'll call a question and all those in favor of the motion proposed, that's carried. Land use bylaw rewrite plan. Brian, you're gonna speak to this?
Sure. So a week or so ago, we received the uh land use bylaw, land use bylaw project from ORSC. It highlights some of the background and on what land use bylaw is and why do we need it? And some of the legislative parameters around it, um, some of the legislation that's involved in drafting the plan. And some of the, the provincial planning documents as well that they guide, guide the, the development of, of these plans and statutory things. Um, and some of the bylaw, our internal bylaws too, that are incorporated into, into some of the wording in that. So I guess the, the, the most important parts and all that outside of the, the back, the, the background is even was helpful to me too, to understand how, how it's all worked and why we need it is, is on page nine. Those are, those are the uh, sorry, that's on page nine is, is the uh, is the timetable for, for how she sees this developing over time. Um, it outlined in seven steps and which ultimately results in the adoption of the, the new bylaw. So it, it runs from now, May twenty twenty-two till um hopefully adoption in, in December twenty twenty-three. So we're looking at a, at least a year and a half process, um, which does take some time to, to involve people to actually draft the, draft the document and have meaningful review by you folks, uh, and, and the public to, to get to that point. So and which will be guided by yourselves and how, how we want to engage and, and that, and that'll be Bonnie, myself and, and you guys. So we can, and within that is, is some workshops. We don't want to sit for three days and go over this. So I think what she's planning is to do half-day workshops to get, to go through these topics, which are noted in the next couple of pages, uh, of, of the things that we had highlighted that we want to look at to, to maybe amend. And there's, that's not a hard and fast list. Either those are just the ones that she has thought about, that staff's thought about and what you guys have brought forward to, 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 to look at, to, to possibly amend in the, in the new bylaw. And you'll find those on page, starting on page eleven, actually on page ten at, at the bottom. So I have you, if you've had a chance to, to look at them, I guess this is where we're, our starting point. Um, there's, there's, we're gonna have to take it in bites. It's, it's gonna be a lot of discussion. Some of them might be quick. Some of them might be a twenty or twenty-minute because everyone agrees it should be changed and, and, and have this. And there's, we're in consensus that that's the way it should go. So other things might be more technical and, and involve some of more Bonnie's professional input. And just uh some new, new things like the cryptocurrency thing that is uh, we haven't really had a whole lot of experience of this. So there's some more research too on some of these topics. So yeah, there's a page and a half of those. Um, yeah. So I guess what, what we're here for is just to have council adopt the, this draft plan with procedural timelines and then, and for the, the, the list of the amendments, I guess. That'll get us going on, on the next step of, of getting council together to start discussing these things. And, and we will involve the, the public, I think, not right at the start just because I think you, we have to all agree what it should look like before we bring people in to, to get their opinions. And then, and then at some point, that's gonna be pretty critical though. I, we don't want to throw it out there without, certainly without getting, getting some uh voices heard from, from the community as well. So that's, that's it in a nutshell. If, if, if there's things you want changed in the draft, to take back to Bonnie, to incorporate, to bring it back one more time, to get, to get approved, to move forward, we can do that too. But this is just a template for moving forward. So just because, you don't have to speak up and say, just because we haven't identified every topic on this list that is some not, doesn't mean we can't put it in as we start discussing. Cause I'm sure there'll be other topics that arise that we just weren't thought of at the time as we go through the old bylaw. But if you're in theory, if you're, if you're theoretically uh, or just in support of this document, then that's, that's the next step is to, to prove it and move forward.
So we would not be approving this document, we're just approving it for the beginning of this, the discussion?
Right. It, it would take the, the draft off the front page basically to, to say this is, this is the timeline and the process that you agree should happen to proceed.
So we basically, just going through your timeline here, um, come up with the draft and then take it out to the public for consultation. Is that the plan?
And with, in consultation with, with council to, to get to that point. So I guess that the draft looks like it would be December twenty twenty-two is when we have the initial draft. And you can see there's, we got step three is engage and step six is consult. So that's up to you guys, what, when do you want to bring the public into, into the discussion? Um, it's a requirement through legislation that you have to, it's required to consult with, with the community um is, is prior to the adoption of the bylaw. But again, that's, that can, that stays, can be stay as optional and be part of the discussions when, when we get going on this. And when, to what degree you want to engage and how.
So the working group would be all of council?
Yes.
And Bonnie and yourself and?
Uh, yes. And to, to what degree if, if we want other administrative folks in there as well? If, if I think it'd probably be useful to have uh, have both Joanna and Jill involved as well. It's learning, the learning exercise too.
Okay. Does anybody have any issues with the proposed plan that they have laid out here for us for getting the land use bylaw looked at again? I know I wasn't here twenty years ago, but that seems like it's gone by quick.
One thing I might add is that it's just a project, project plan, line, not the land use bylaw.
Right.
It's land use bylaw project.
Project, yeah, yeah.
I think it's a, a good plan. I know there's probably a half dozen residents that I know are watching us do this. So I think we would be remiss if we took out the engagement part cause I think some people have some ideas. So I, I think it looks good. And again, like we said, uh, how that goes, whether we bring them in, whether we do a survey, whether we do an open house, whatever we think. But I would be reluctant to get to the consult phase and find out, oh, we missed the mark on something. So to me, it looks like a lot of work and, and will be a, a good project for us to develop.
Right. Any other thoughts around the table?
I just, just, just one, um, being at this, uh, current land use bylaws eighteen years old. Um, is that common practice to leave them in that long without review and change? Or are, are we, I guess, outside of the norm or are we right in the middle of it?
Actually, I just, I'm taking a, a planning course right now and that came up in, in some of my readings just uh in the last couple of weeks. And it said within twenty years that you should review, do a thorough review of, of your land use bylaw.
And this is a, an overview, a redo of the whole thing? I mean, we've made amendments along the way that we felt were necessary. But this is a, a complete rework or rewrite of the land use bylaw. So yeah, it's, it's gonna be a big project.
Yeah, amendments are normal for sure. Typical.
Okay. Anything else anybody can identify that they think should be in or shouldn't be in part of this uh project uh outline, review outline?
Oh, go ahead. Oh, um, after Councilor Minag's comments there, should we not make the engage portion optional? And uh, cause if we don't have that engagement before the consultation, we could really miss the mark.
Sure. I can, I can relay that back to Bonnie if that's your desire.
Any other thoughts? You're good. Any other thoughts, Brian? Okay. If everybody's okay with it, then we've made a motion to approve the draft version of the land use bylaw plan.
As I can make the motion that uh council approved the draft version of land use bylaw plan provided by ORSC and that administration proceed with the delivery of the plan with the goal of producing a revised land use bylaw within the proposed timelines. I'd also like to add that uh, I guess none of this is fixed in the process, that we can move things around as we see fit. That, that's now more speaking to the engagement so that we can move the timeline. If we see that uh we need to move things in a different place, that we would, I guess, uh, relay that to administration.
Okay, Councilor Chikado has given us the motion that council approved the draft version of the land use bylaw plan approved, provided by ORSC. And direct administration proceed with the delivery, delivery of the plan with the goal of producing a revised land use bylaw within the proposed timeline and?
And also note that this plan is interchangeable by council on an ongoing basis.
Okay. Any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor? It's carried. Move down to ten. Ten point one, twenty twenty-two property tax rate bylaw number nineteen ninety.
Can we just take a brief recess?
Pardon me?
Uh, could we just take a brief recess?
We could. Yep, we can have five minutes.